Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance at this evening's school board meeting. It's March 14th, 2016. All board members are here except for Director Corman, who's out of town. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would someone like to have approval of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we begin, I'd like to call for a motion to establish a closed session for the purpose of negotiations discussion upon the conclusion of tonight's school board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. We're going to start with recognition of students, staff, and public. And we're going to begin with our friend. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners in the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. I'd like to welcome Board Member Jim Sorum to do the introduction of our friend for the evening, the Masonic Home.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm glad that there are more people that came in today because I'd like to introduce Shelley Wigan, the Administrator for the Masonic Home in Bloomington. And the Masonic Home is devoted to education and has been a great partner for Bloomington Public Schools. The Masonic Home has donated much-needed equipment to the Bloomington Career and College Academy. And this equipment will help offset programming costs for a nursing lab. And this lab will help give our students the opportunity to gain a nursing assistance registry license. The Masonic Home has also been generous with their time in supplying guest speakers and having our students to their site for a very educational visit. We want to thank Shelley and the Masonic Home for their continued support. And I'd also, from a personal perspective, like to share an article from the Masonic Home that they send out to the donors and benefactors, of which maybe some of you also have been involved with out there. Their therapeutic sessions and transitional care are very important. So they have a nice article in the paper about engaging high school students. The home provides hospital beds and other equipment and has offered tours of the Minnesota Masonic Home campus. Students who complete the health science coursework are certified as nursing assistants and ultimately may choose to work for our great care community. And so with that introduction, I will welcome Shelley to the microphone and I'll limp off.
Yeah. Thank you, and I really appreciate the invitation to be here. I am passionate about health care and so grateful for the partnership with Bloomington Schools. Our collaboration goes back many years. We did intergenerational programs with Westwood Elementary. We have been part of Career Explorers. And now the really exciting one is the Career and College Academy. And I need to share that I started in health care many years ago. In fact, it might give you some idea when. I actually started with a work program in high school called Trades and Industries. I wanted to be a nurse, and they let me out of school half a day to go pursue this at what was then Golden Valley Hospital. So when I, this fall, was struggling, as many workforce members are, with finding workforce and looking for new opportunities and partnerships, and I decided to call the school district, and much to my amazement, was connected after a few calls to Gary Cresson and was so excited to hear that you had this new program starting for high school students to get them involved in health careers. It was perfect timing, and it was perfect for our campus to partner with the school district. We're very excited about encouraging people to go into health care. I don't know if you saw a recent statistic I just saw from American Health Care that we are the 10th-largest employer in the nation, senior care. That is amazing to me. And that is really where the future is with the silver tsunami coming and needing to get people to care for people in health care. So we're really excited to partner with the school district. I don't know if you all know, I'm just going to do a little commercial here for my business. Minnesota Masonic Home is a senior campus on the Minnesota River in South Bloomington, serving 325 seniors on any given day. We have a large transitional care unit for short stays, where people go following a knee replacement, a hip replacement, surgeries, things like that. Last year, we had 2,000 people come through our doors for short-term stay. We also have 114 beds of long-term care. We have assisted living, and we have independent living, all on one campus. So we employ about 600 people. So we have a large need for health care staff, and it's, you know, it can be nursing, like I was a nurse, that's how I started my career. Well, actually, I started as a dietary aide, then a nursing aide, and then I went on to nursing school, later got my administration and business degrees. But there's all kinds of opportunities at the Minnesota Masonic and in health care in general. And it's programs like your district's program that really is crucial to the workforce in the future. So thank you for that, and thank you for thanking us.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I'd like to tell you about a requirement of our 12th-grade government class, which is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, and the like. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. Right now, I'd like to invite, there's two or three students in the audience, I'd like to invite them up to the podium if they would introduce themselves and just tell us whose class you're in. And after one hour, you can get a signature from one of our administrative cabinet on the side of your agenda.
I'm Rachel Dubevold, and I'm from Mr. Storlein's class.
Thank you.
I'm Regina Schlichting, and I'm also from Mr. Storlein's class.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming.
You don't have to leave after an hour, you can stay for the whole thing.
Except the closing.
All right. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda.
Oh, I just want to make a statement here. Welcome to Wendy and the BFT members, and you're here to talk, address the school board about negotiation topics, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. This meeting is the second of three school board sessions tonight, so therefore, I'm going to take this opportunity to share the protocol for addressing the board this evening. With respect to the protocols, you and your members can proceed with addressing the board, but we ask the group to stay within a 10-minute total time allowance out of respect for the other audience members and our scheduled agenda for the evening. And I understand you have three or four people that are going to be addressing. Okay. So we ask that you just stay within the 10-minute timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, cabinet members, listening audience. My name is Wendy Marchek, and I am the BFT President of Bloomington Federation of Teachers. Last spring, I think some of you will remember, we came to a school board meeting and rolled out this beautiful scroll of signatures. When we did that, our message was this: We want negotiations to be different this round. It was really our attempt to start the tone differently, and that's what we did. I did not think we would be here today. It's March. We just had our first BFT fair, and when we planned that, we didn't think we would still be without a contract. So today, we are going to have some speakers that just share the story of some of the teachers that work in the district, so that you understand how this does affect us when we don't have a contract, and it's months and months, and it's March, and the pattern continues, even though we've given our best shot to change the pattern. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Seeling. I'm a teacher at Jefferson High School, and I'm sharing a story from another teacher. I'm a science teacher in this district. I encourage anyone interested in science or math to go into other fields where the pay and appreciation is much greater. Two of my sons are in math and science fields, and both of them are in their 20s, and they're making more than I am as a teacher in my 50s. I have a master's degree, and they don't, yet the teacher pay increasingly does not keep up with the cost of living. Although my sons sometimes work into the evenings, so do I. I'm at school nearly nine hours every day, and I always have work to do in the evenings and on weekends. My husband and son get automatic pay increases each year. They get 2% or 3% raises automatically with a good review. I've seen 0% and salary freezes numerous times in this district. This is the only district I know of that repeatedly won't even start negotiations until we have already been working without a contract. Many talented math and science teachers have left this district because they have realized how little they are appreciated here, and younger math or science teachers can get jobs easily elsewhere. A science teacher left last year to go to a neighboring district. Although on paper, the salary looked like it was less, he in fact made a fair amount more because his out-of-pocket insurance costs were much less than we have for family insurance. In addition, he will have more vacation days and more sick days and more family illness days. In other words, his benefits are much better in a neighboring district as well. I encourage people interested in teaching to apply to other districts where morale is better and where they are treated more respectfully.
My name is April Baden. I am a math teacher at Kennedy High School. Dear school board members, I am a resident of Bloomington and a member of Kennedy's Mathematics Department. I currently teach honors precalculus as part of the concurrent enrollment partnership with Normandale and EL algebra. I began teaching honors precalculus in the fall of 2014 and worked hard to design a course that provides students with an engaging and meaningful math experience. The Normandale textbook does not contain many opportunities for high-level thinking, problem-solving, or student collaboration, all of which I consider to be important elements in any curriculum. So I spent countless hours combining, combing through other resources, and creating my own materials. Most days, I arrived at school at 6:30 in the morning and left school around 5 o'clock in the evening. I spent this extra time in my classroom planning lessons and working with students. After I returned home and ate dinner, I continued writing lessons and assessments, and sometimes grading as well, until 9:00 p.m. And of course, I also devoted several hours during the weekend to my schoolwork. And I did all of this while pregnant. I put in these long hours until I gave birth in the middle of February 2015. During my maternity leave, I continued to grade tests and write exams, and I exchanged daily emails with my long-term sub. This school year, since I now have a little boy at home who is looking forward to being a student at Bloomington Public School, and my instructional materials were created last year, I have shortened my hours at school to 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I see many other teachers at school well before or after contract hours, too. And we enjoy being there. We love working with students. We are excited to create engaging lessons for students. We are dedicated to providing the best educational experience possible for all students. And for all of this, we need your support. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name's Helen Wells, and I'm a special education teacher at Westwood Elementary. I've been working in the district for 10 years. Those who know me are probably shocked and surprised that I would even speak publicly. But where we are at in negotiations disturbs me. In special education, we are expected to complete individualized education plans for students, complete evaluations, reevaluations, and third-party billing. We are given a timeline to complete these, but not always the time. These are very detailed and time-consuming reports. We are expected to stay in compliance with federal and state laws and regulations. That means if a report is due tomorrow, and I have plans with my husband tonight, I either cancel the plans or I stay up late working on that report, because it's law. You might think this is about time management, but it is not. During my prep, which I finally got after 10 years in the district, I need and choose to plan my lessons, communicate with parents, and collaborate with other teachers and staff. All things that I enjoy doing and make me continue to love the profession I'm in, because despite all the extra work I do outside this school day, I love teaching. I understand that I have to do the extra work and accept the responsibility, but would like to be compensated with a fair wage increase. I fear for the future of Bloomington schools. We need to continue to attract good teachers that feel valued. Teachers like Kennedy's English teacher, Mr. Robinson, and Mrs. Parrish. My daughter and son are products of the Bloomington Public Schools, and they give those two teachers the credit for preparing them for college writing. When my husband was in school, he's also a Bloomington grad, his father, we used to call him a weed lair, meaning that he had potential, but he wasn't showing what he knew. And he had a Bloomington teacher, Mrs. Bradford, that saw that potential and took the time to develop a relationship with him and get him to work up to his true potential. These are the teachers we need to attract, and they need and deserve to be given a fair wage for their hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board Chair Bartolata, and honored board members, many of whom I have met in community events outside, and I'm sure you're shocked to see this face at this podium. My name is Cindy McEnroy, and I am a speech-language pathologist here in the Bloomington School District, and I am a Bloomington resident and parent of Bloomington products. My purpose for speaking to you this evening is in regards to the billing of medical assistance, or more commonly referred to as third-party billing for special education services. I can speak specifically to the role of a speech therapist doing third-party billing in the Bloomington schools. Each of our 18 SLPs carries a caseload of 54 students, one-half of which are billable to third-party MA under federal mandates. Each of those students is seen twice a week, and each speech therapist must complete a billing log note that takes an average of five minutes per student therapy session. That totals four and one-half hours per week, or one-half of a teacher contract day spent on third-party billing paperwork. With that in mind, for my four-and-a-half hours of third-party paperwork, you as a district get to recoup up to $16 for each of my 52 billable therapy sessions each week. Not working into balancing that equation is the fact that I have no caseload or workload cap, and I must complete all of my federally mandated due-process paperwork and meetings and find time to provide the face-to-face therapy which you hired me as highest-qualified professional to provide. I and my fellow speech pathologists are required to hold a master's degree and maintain our national certification annually in order to legally third-party bill. It also allows us to be the only standalone special education provider that can also be case managers. My highly qualified, skilled services are why I deserve a stipend equivalent to that of my national board-certified peers. Thank you very much for your consideration of the ethical, hard-working special education professionals in this district across all of the related services required to third-party bill.
I'd like to ask Wendy if, as you've done in the past, could you provide us with written statements from what was spoken tonight?
I'm going to email Deb Tamara with all of them for you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to assure everyone in the audience, both listening in at home, that the board is committed to a fair and affordable settlement. At the same time, our community expects us to be fiscally responsible. We must not become a school system that reaches a settlement only to announce deeper budget cuts than what we've already been, that have already been publicly shared. The board is engaged and up-to-date on the status of negotiations. We seek a mutually acceptable settlement. Eight sessions have been held since negotiations began in mid-October. Progress continues to be made on a number of items brought forward, and all items previously not discussed by both sides at the table were covered in the first mediation session on March 8th. We look forward to continued progress toward a contract settlement. The board wants everyone to understand the true nature of our fund balance. Over the past three years, we have spent down our savings by more than $10 million. The budget cuts that we have made to date would have been more severe if we had not purposely built up our savings. Please accept our invitation to the March 28th school board meeting, when our audit firm will share information about our fund balance and other school-budget-related items. We believe that you will find this information insightful and helpful. The board values and recognizes all of our high-quality teachers who come to work each day focused on their students. We appreciate the great work that they do every day. We encourage all teachers to request and review the information that has been shared with your negotiation team, specifically the comparative data with respect to pay, benefits, class size, and school size. I thank you for listening to us and sharing your time and perspectives this evening. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the Part A of our agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Our days, our minutes, our personnel items, our field trips, and our contracts and agreements. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Brings us to Part B. Number one is an adjustment to Community Ed Independent Hourly Employee Wage and Benefit Plan. Would someone like to make the resolution?
I'll read that one.
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves an adjustment to the Community Education Independent Hourly Employee Wage and Benefit Plan 2013-2015. This change affects only Schedule B-2 casual hourly wages for water safety aides and lifeguards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our Executive Director of Human Resources, Mary Burrows, is here to tell us a little bit of background.
I cheer for Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. The reason why the change occurred was because the federal-state minimum wage went up, so we comply with the law. So the only two categories that fell below the minimum wage requirement were the two that we mentioned. So we did adjust those up at the time, and as we continue to do contract work, we'll probably look at that overall, too, again, because it's supposed to be going up again this summer, again, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mary?
The thing I was wondering is, since it changed, and then we were technically out of compliance, and we had to raise the wage anyways, and we don't really even have an option of not approving this, would it make sense to have something in our policy that just says we're going to raise it if this were ever to occur? Then you don't have to spend time coming in front of us, or is this something that we should be doing every year anyways?
I'll leave that for David to answer.
Certainly. Put it in a policy which would enable the administration to make those changes when they occur, if you want to.
I'll refer that to our policy committee.
Okay. Maybe we can talk about, because I was just thinking, this doesn't make sense that we would even have to approve an increase to minimum wage.
It's more of awareness for everybody, yeah.
Did you have a question?
So have these people been, August 1st, when minimum wage went up, so did they get a raise at that time, or have we been paying them?
We had very few people that actually fell into that because of where they were in the steps. Those were like step one, and I think maybe two of the helpers.
Okay.
So we had very few people that fell, but at the time, we looked at it and we raised people, yeah.
Okay. So it's not like we've been out of compliance for six months or anything?
No.
And these are the only ones in the district, like kids' safari employees are making above minimum wage?
They're making above, yeah.
Okay. All right, how many of these employees would, ballpark, would you say that we have in the district?
I don't know. I'd have to look at that. I'd have to get that, too.
Is it like less than 20, or?
Probably.
Okay. And so their salary, I would assume, comes from the fees that people are spending for, when they enroll their kids into these water safety classes or admissions?
I'd have to get back to you on that, too.
But it comes from like Community Ed?
Yeah, it's Community Ed.
So, but we didn't raise the fees to offset the change in increasing salary?
Not that we know of, no.
Okay. And also, the water safety instructor, before we changed the salary, there was about a $2.30 differential in pay from the water safety aide, and now that we've raised it to $9, that differential has gotten a lot smaller. Was there any consideration to raising the water safety instructor's salary?
We'd have to look at that when we look at the whole Community Ed schedules, is when we would look at that.
Okay.
We haven't done that yet for independents, because we're still in negotiations.
Oh, is that a negotiated salary there? Okay. Yeah, because I'm thinking, there's probably got to be some more experience and qualifications to be in that position, and you used to get $2 more an hour, now you only get $1. It's kind of like, well, why even have that added responsibility, like make almost as much money as just being an aide?
Right.
And especially since it's going up again in August to $9.50, then that differential shrinks even more.
Right. We'll look at that when we review the entire contract, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing no other questions, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? No. Just make it. Next, we have a cooperative sponsorship for Jefferson and Kennedy Girls Golf Programs. Someone like to make the resolution? Director Oliva.
Madam Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a cooperative sponsorship for the Jefferson and Kennedy Girls Golf Program effective with the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
Thank you. Our Director of Communications is here to address this in the absence of our Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. I'm pitching for Mr. Melby. He would like you all to know that he is meeting with parents at Westwood Elementary School, part of a focus group and part of the hiring process for the new principal. Very briefly, Eric and I met, and he just wanted me to underscore that for the current season, Kennedy High School does not have enough students to field a team. There are between two and three, two or three Kennedy High School female students that will compete on this cooperative team. Should any of those two or three female students make it to state, they would participate as a student of Kennedy High School, not as the cooperative. And then one other thing, the West Metro Conference also recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Did everyone get the comment that I had?
Yeah.
Okay. I was trying to see if there was any way to kind of sneak them in there, but no. The answer, they've already thought of that, and the answer is no. So, but I figured it's worth asking.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next, we have student adult admission fees for activities 2016 and '17. Would someone like to, Director Bell?
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves student adult admission fees for activities for the 2016-2017 school year.
And again, thank you. And again, in the absence of Director.
Just a couple, again, from Mr. Melby. The first was that the fees that brings in line both of the schools' band concerts, it reduces Jefferson's band concert fee, but they certainly can operate within that budget. So it does bring those, that in line. The season pass, the $70, just to recollection, the board did approve that to go up to $100 last year. There was a typographical error made, and so the schools went to $70, and they are comfortable with that, to leave that season pass at $70. All other fees will remain the same, and Eric wanted me to underscore as well that families that are in need, we do work with them at each respective school for, on these fees as well.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions or comments on this one?
Well, just a clarification. In reading the background, detailed background, it said that administration planned to create a new adult year-long pass, administration planned to charge $70 for the pass. However, the charge amount in last year's resolution was mistyped, $100 was listed instead of the 70, so, which was correct, because you said.
Correct. So, well, right, the board approved the $100, but the error was on our part in listing it as $70, so.
Oh, okay.
The schools budgeted for the $70 season pass, and good mistake, because they found that they can operate within that for next year as well.
So the typo was before we approved it, not after it?
It was after. Once it was approved, the.
So, but it was, but you meant to, you recommended seventy, but accidentally put a hundred, and then we accidentally approved a hundred, or you intended to have it seventy? Does this make sense? Have you ever better answer?
It's supposed to have been seventy, we mistyped it a hundred.
Okay.
So we charged seventy dollars.
Okay.
We apologize for that mistake.
I'm surprised Rick didn't find that.
You know, I can't, I can't catch all of your mistakes, Tom.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. That brings us to a report on the closed session of February twenty-second. The School Board Superintendent and members of the Cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, February twenty-second, for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. No School Board action was taken or required. We also have a report on our School Board Retreat of March tenth, 2016. The School Board Superintendent and Administrative Cabinet Retreat on Thursday, March tenth, provided an opportunity to learn more about and discuss topics that include alignment, strategic direction, financial planning, and a facilities update. Our retreats have proven to be a very valuable, to be very valuable in learning more about our work together as a team. We learn, explore, and seek better understanding in the interest of improving what we do for our students, staff, and the district as a whole. That brings us to board member reports. Would someone like to give us a report?
Sure, I'll go first. Our Youth Advisory Committee Task Force met and discussed some options for our March twenty-eighth meeting, or will be discussing, I believe, it's scheduled to be on the agenda on March twenty-eighth, the topic of student engagement in the district, and what the board would like to do, or see, or set as parameters for that student engagement. We also met with our Youth Advisory Council. The students of the middle schools today before the board meeting shared some good information, good feedback with us, I feel, that we can use going forward. I'm not sure if our task force needs to meet again before the March twenty-eighth. I think we assembled the notes from that, so this--
Didn't we talk about maybe going to high school to get their feedback on engagement before we have our--
Yeah, before, yeah. So one of the things I want to bring up, and I don't know if we need to have a whole discussion now, is perhaps going to the high schools again one more time, just to get their perspective, see if we can schedule ten minutes on their agenda to get their perspective on engagements, just so that way we can have a little bit more, a few more notes going into that March twenty-eighth meeting, you know, the topic of how much they want to get engaged, because we, as a board, maybe don't even need to pursue avenues that the students have no interest in. Also, if there's things that the board doesn't want to do, no use pursuing that with students.
Are you, are you thinking that it would be just a committee that--
Yeah, maybe just us.
Yeah.
Or one of us knows.
Okay.
And just get some feedback. Is that something that we maybe-- We'd have to do it quick.
Just a reminder, yeah, spring break is next week.
Yeah, let's see.
It'd have to be this week.
And so, yeah, that's in three days. So it might not, it might not happen. It could be as simple as an email asking for feedback. We could, we could find out who, would, Deb, do you think emailing the student advisor, or like the student, because I think they like, like the president or the chair of their committee, would just solicit feedback and say, hey, if you can get back to us before March twenty-eighth, some feedback, we'll share it with the board? Can we do that? Okay, maybe I'll send you my thoughts, and we'll do that. Sound good?
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so we, we had that, and then the retreat, as Chair Bartolata mentioned, I think it was very valuable. I think we, we, it was, it was very informative, and I felt like, yeah, that's a very, a time well-spent, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll go next.
Director Bergstrom.
All right. Just want to echo Director Oliva's thoughts about the Advisory Council meeting. That was in this room directly before, before the meeting tonight, that's why it smells like pizza in here. It's good, we wanted to lure you in here. It was, want to make sure that the students that were in here feel that they can continue to share their comments, and I had offered them the opportunity to send us emails, and if they just send it to schoolboard@isd271.org, it'll come to all of us, and the copy goes to Superintendent. So if you're watching this and listening, please send us your thoughts. It was a lot of fun to see you all. Had a chance to attend the PTSA Council meeting. Dawn is our, I believe, our liaison rep, and I'm sure she'll have an in-depth report.
Short.
Short, a short report. Anyways, it's nice to, to stop in and say hello to all the reps. It was over at Civic Plaza, up in one of the art rooms, I think it was sculpture, I think they do clay work or painting or something up there. It's kind of, it's just nice to stop in and see all the folks from the PTSA. The board had its legislative forum. I think it's been three weeks since we met, so it was here. We had all of our elected officials here, we laid out our legislative platform, and I think that went well. All of the, the three people from the House Representatives and the two senators were here, and that was good conversation. It's always nice to see those people. I was watching the House coverage today and listened in a little bit to Senator Wicklin giving some testimony on one of the bills that she was authoring, so it's nice to see our local legislators at work. Stopped in for lunch at Poplar Bridge. It's always a good time to sit and eat with the students. Just want to give a special word of thanks to all the food service people. They make that particular lunchtime go really, really smoothly. They know all the tricks that the students might try to maybe not get what they don't want and get a lot of what they really want, and they keep that lunch line moving, and everything is happy and upbeat, and it's kind of fun. I sat down and ate and ended up opening fifteen ketchup packages, because they didn't care who I was, they, I sat with a first-grade class, and as soon as I sat down, they said, "Can you open my ketchup?" So I was opening ketchup packets. Also attended the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce Legislative Forum. As board members, we are all members of the Chamber of Commerce, and I go there, I think, maybe once a month, just at the meet and greet. They had a legislative forum, and it was, I was essentially there kind of spying, just to see if all of our legislators said the same things that they said here at our forum, which was, I think, the week before, sat next to Director Sorum and just behind the Superintendent. So I'm sure if we triangulated our notes, they would all come out the same. Attended a program called Bridge to Selma. This was hosted by the Human Rights Commission of Bloomington. It was nice to see our Community Engagement Committee plus one was there. Really interesting conversation was over at Civic Plaza in the theater, I can't remember, is it the Rose Snyder Theater? A really interesting conversation about a forty-minute movie, and then a panel discussion. Dr. Joyce Hester was the moderator, and they had three, three very interesting people up on that panel. I think it's running on cable access, some, at some channel, they were recording it. So if you're interested in looking in, you can look on the city's webpage to watch that. Custodial Transportation Committee, or the Custodial Transportation Met, once again, things I think are moving along. Community Engagement Committee met, and that was myself and Dawn and Marine and the Superintendent. I'm sure Dawn has a, once again, an in-depth report on that. Had a chance to catch The Lion King right across the way here at Oak Grove Middle. That was a wonderful date night. Got, got my wife right away from home, and we had a lot of fun. It was, the show was awesome, of course, the costumes were fantastic. And a big word of thanks to all the people that made that production, what it was, there were eighty-five kids or something like that. When you include the kiddos that wear the black, all-black suits that rush out in-between scenes and change the scenery, the setup crew or the tech crew, whatever they're referred to, those guys put just as much effort and energy into it as the, the main characters. So, big word of thanks to all the people that made that happen. This year, I had a chance to call two of the games for the Minnesota State High School League-adapted floor hockey, and this was held over at Jefferson just this last weekend. Let's see, Friday, I kept my notes from it, so this is Saturday. I called the, there's two divisions, CI and PI. CI is cognitively impaired, PI is physically impaired. I was fortunate to call two games. They, they both ended up being cognitively impaired players. They were the Owatonna Huskies and the Dakota United Hawks, and that was Friday night. Dakota United ended up on the short, short end of the stick there to Owatonna. And on Saturday at noon, called the St. Cloud Area Slapshots against the North Suburban Cougars. And the, the Cougars came on strong at the end and won that one eleven to five. Just want to say a great big word of thanks again to all the volunteers that make those events happen. It just, it really couldn't happen without all the, all the volunteers putting in hours and hours of work with logistics, making sure the families know where to park, making sure maybe they know where to go to get a sandwich. There were some people walking out and asked me, because I had a district name tag on when I was leaving, I said, "Where's the best, where's the quickest subway?" And so I sent them over to a subway they weren't from around here, just, just people pitching in to help and make these programs work. And it's, it's a lot of fun, and what I did was announce the names, and then announce the goals that are scored, and you would think that it would be simple, but it really isn't. When you, when you announce those names, you only get one time to get it right, and if you mispronounce somebody's last name, you got mom, dad, grandpa, grandma, brother, sister, aunt, uncle, and they come from all over, and they'll let you know. Nobody, nobody was mean, but they'll, they'll, they'll rattle off the right pronunciation for that name. So, thanks again to all those folks for, for putting that on, and it was a lot of fun. Looking forward to it again next year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a chance to attend the Hillcrest Hoedown, a very popular event. I found out that many middle schoolers like to come back with their younger siblings and evidently see all their friends there, so it was great fun, a lot of attendees. I also had, had a chance to attend Washburn's Pride Rally, and I would say hats off to, or maybe I should say hair off, to the principal and the two teachers, if you saw in the front of the sun current, who all agreed to let students shave their heads as a reward for the Read-A-Thon that they held for their fundraiser. So there were three students that I think were the highest, raised the most money, the three highest, each got to shave someone's head, so that was a good event. And boy, let me tell you, those kids were really cheering for, for the, see that hair come off, so, great event. I did attend the PTSA Council. I was just going to say briefly that the main focus of that was summer programs, and you know how fortunate we are to live where the city and the school, and everybody is working together to provide great summer programs for our children in this community. I also attended the, the District Diversity Advisory Committee, was all invited to attend the Selma Bridge to Ballot, so I was also there as part of that committee, and, but you know, we were so spread out, I'm not really sure how many of the committee people were actually there. So I did see a few people, but I'm not sure. Also, the Community Engagement Committee, the main topics there was the Hundred Year Celebration and Heritage Days coming up, and I also spent one day last week in the teacher negotiations with a mediator, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Great, thank you. I have four things. First, the date of the District-wide Food Drive for 2016 will be April twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth. This is a collaborative effort between the PTSA Council, the School Board, and the School Board's Youth Advisory Council. We'll talk about the principal selection processes. We have three. Jefferson High School Principal Kevin Grubner is retiring, so we're seeking replacement for his position. Westwood Elementary Principal Carolyn Hartwixon is retiring, we're seeking a replacement for her. Valley View Elementary School, Corey Thompson is the current interim principal for 1516. We told the community that we would be going through a process to seek a permanent principal, so that process has started. Third topic is spring break. It starts on March twenty-first, ends on May, March twenty-fifth. And the last is tomorrow, the Innovation Zone Bill. We've talked about that before. It's being, there's two hearings, one in the Senate, one in the House for that bill. Dr. Highstead will be testifying at both, so it's moving along. We're very encouraged that it's getting hearings. With this short session, not very many bills are getting hearings, so. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, we are adjourned.